It's seven o'clock when we call the meeting of the board of selectmen. First item of business is the budget regions. All members of the board of selectmen are here present. Our first item of business is to approve minutes from the November tenth, twenty twenty two special meeting. There in your packet, are there any corrections or is there a motion?
Remove that we approved the special meeting minutes from November tenth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Propose no?
Jason, the second was Charlie?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
November seventeenth regular meeting minutes. Then have a motions.
Make a motion to accept date November seventeen, twenty twenty two regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I can second it? Any discussion or corrections?
On page two. Wouldn't you just shorten say budget submission letter?
I don't see what you're looking at.
First, selectman Bowser requests the addition of the following added agenda items under new business. Discussion of acceptance of supporting grant from the senate department. Think the discussion of fiscal year twenty twenty three budget submission letter?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That is correct. It's not, because we don't have a submission yet. It's just the guidelines for the budget, right? So that's a good end. Any other corrections? Seeing none, a motion to accept the minutes as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? So carry. All with participation. This is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the board of selectmen. I'll first turn to anybody in the room. If you would kindly identify yourself by name and address. And then absent that, I'll turn to anybody who's with us online and ask you to identify yourself by your name and address. And then we'll, we'll hear your business. Is there anybody here present who would like to address the board of selectmen? There anybody online who would like to address the board of selectmen? Okay, there will be another opportunity for that later in the meeting. I like good news, and this was, this was a nice thing that came in. So I have a constituent letter from a, a business person in town. Mark McNeil, who spoke a number of housing developments in our community and others, sent this email on November twenty first and asked that I, I share it with the relevant departments and boards and commissions. So I'll read it for the audience. It says, hi, Jason, it's all too often that we have time to complain and never time to provide any positive accolades. I wanted to send you this so you and if you would share, the boards and commissioners know firsthand how town employees are providing services. I will not dwell on or mention any dealings in the past, but suffice it to say, it was a frustrating experience with some departments. The years go by so fast, I don't remember if you were at the helm during the transitional periods. And as I close out a project, I was reflecting back. First, the Department of Public Works, Teresa Regian, Joe Sauerhopper, and Len Norton, went above and beyond in assisting with the transitional period of the planning and zoning office. I don't know how they kept their sanity, but can tell you that they did an amazing job handling both departments. Kudos to them. A great transformation has occurred in both the planning and zoning and the building departments. Ruth, Ken, and Angela are breath of fresh air, extremely helpful, approachable, and willing to assist. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Mike the consultant, who was also very knowledgeable and helpful, a welcome change indeed. Please insert into their files a copy of this letter, so in the future, there is hopefully some positives, as each job is challenging and difficult to please everyone. Passes on earports and commissions so that they know from a business perspective and a person dealing with various departments, that each of these employees are not just looking out for, are not just looking out for the town's best interests, but also mine as well. I'm looking forward to doing business in East Windsor in the future, and again, just want some awareness of the good work that's taking place. Hard to believe another year has passed so quickly, so I do want to wish you and yours the very best this holiday season. So that, that was some very positive feedback over two departments that we've spent collectively a, a very significant amount of time changing the attitude and the approach that cut, uh, consumers or constituents rather have in dealing with the town government. And to hear from all those people directly that that is paying off is a nice thing to see. Boarding commission resignations and appointments. We have four resignations between three people. We have no new appointments, no reappointments. So can I have a motion to accept the first one resignation of Joe Sauerhopper from the building commission?
I'll move to accept the resignation of Joe Sauerhoffer from building commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with regret.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think it's a shame after fifteen years, um, because of some negativity on, on Facebook that Amanda has given fifteen years to this town without any hesitation to do what needs to be done to better East Windsor. So I'm sad to see this. I think the going on commission has lost a wonderful person. I'm glad we were able to get somebody on to replace him as quickly as we did. But you're gonna have some big shoes to fill in, so good luck. But I personally, um, after fifteen years, I won't accept that resignation, even though I don't have any control over it. It won't take place, so I won't.
Any other comments?
I'd like to echo Marie's comments. I think, um, Mr. Sauerhopper was a great addition to this commission over the years. Um, it's sad to see the reason why he's resigning. I don't think that anything unethical was done, and I think I agree with him that his background really was an addition and sad to see this happen.
I would also like to chime in on that, this and then this resignation for the planning and zoning commission, which I think was especially a, a loss for us because you brought a good perspective to that board. I think it was really nothing short of character assassination and a lot of irresponsible talk that people should think twice before they, um, say things like they and, and do the things that they do on Facebook. I think it is pretty irresponsible. And, and I, I regret the fact that, that he didn't fight it.
Just a question. I mean, he's resigned, so we have to accept it, correct? I mean, he's unless he would reconsider.
We could ask him to reconsider, but I, I'm not sure that that's something that, i- if you'd like, I'm happy to table it. I, I will talk to him offline, but I wouldn't want to do anything that's going to, um, put him in a position he doesn't want to be in.
Well, what is the rest? What is the rest of the board thinking?
I think it's water to the bridge now. Damage done.
Uh, I agree. It is really too bad. Have to turn away people with a lot of values. All in favor of the resignation? All opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay. So I don't know what to do with that. Put me in a box and I will figure it out. So Gary turn on to the second one?
Might want to table that.
Move the table, the resignation of Joe Sauerhoffer from the planning and zoning commission?
Second.
All in favor of postponement? Please say aye.
Aye.
Propose?
Aye. Only because it's going to be negativity because it's postponed. But I'm glad you guys are, are backing Joey and Nurse are backing on out there. Uh, if anybody said Paul, per Joey Sauerhoffer being appointed to the planning and zoning commission, um, that's the point. We aired unknowingly and unwittingly, um, and instead of somebody bringing it to our attention like a grown adult, they took it to Facebook and they went after the wrong person. They went after somebody that was doing what he thought was best for the town or the East Windsor, which he just always done. So people who want to criticize and blame, I'll take full responsibility for putting him on that board and putting him in that situation because he doesn't deserve what he's been going through.
Well said. Um, all right. We have two resignations from the ethics commission. Um, so Tom Burnham has been, um, on the ethics commission for a number of years. He chaired it for a number of years, including rewriting the town's municipal ethics ordinance. Um, his, he turned out like two years ago, um, but a, uh, an appointment was never made to fill his seats. And so the way that the, the charter is written is that you're on there until your term expires or until your successor is named, whichever comes later. While we never did in later part, so he has finally gotten around to officially submitting the paper that says he's resigning, even though he expected that he just turned off two years ago. So that's, that's what happened there. Can I have a motion to accept this one?
I'll move to accept the resignation of Tom Burnham from the ethics commission with regret.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second? Is any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank Tom for, um, doing his due diligence, even though two years ago we thought he was done. Um, by actually participating in the last exit commission complaint that was unfounded. Um, he took his role seriously, even though he complained that he couldn't get off. Um, but he did his due diligence, so I congratulate him with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, and the last one is the current chair of the ethics commission, who's, uh, taken another job that will take her out of town relatively frequently. Um, and so she said, because there is a lull of activity there, thankfully, um, she wanted to, to step down before there was, uh, a circumstance that arose that she had to step out of the building. So Mary Hepner is, um, stepping up for professional reasons. Can I have a motion?
Move to accept the resignation of Mary Hepner from the ethics commission with regret.
Second. Made in seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Okay. Oh. So as you all know, uh, this is the second year that I've worked with Westfield State University's graduate program and their master's in public administration program and their organizational behavior class. The professor who teaches that class is the head of the department. He's here with us tonight. Dr. Stefano, welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, and for the last several months, I've been working with students from that program on, um, kind of an overview and assessment on our economic development activities and the communication work that goes into supporting them. Um, so those students are here tonight. Um, I'm going to let them introduce themselves and, um, they can take the floor for as long as they need. Don't give me one second before everything.
Yeah.
That's a cool visual as far as I'm concerned. You gotta have a team behind you and, uh, you guys did well as a team this semester, so looking forward to this.
Today's the first day we all saw each other in person, which is interesting, and the professor as well. All right. We're all good?
Yep.
Right? All right. Good evening, select board members and residents of East Windsor. Thank you for having us here tonight. We are graduate students from Westfield University and have teamed up with your first selectman, Jason Bowser, to explore the communication efforts put forth by the town of East Windsor as it relates to economic development. When we began our course organizational behavior, the entire class had three civic engagement projects to choose from. The six of us chose East Windsor as our community-based project. The purpose of this project was to evaluate stakeholder understanding and the assessment of the town's efforts to support existing businesses and economic development in order to recommend enhancements to the town's communication of these activities. As we go through the presentation, you will see how we conducted our research through various methods and what our results and recommendations are. I am Rbaka Ruplee. I am in the final stages of my master's program and I'm on track to graduate in two thousand twenty three. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration from UMass Amherst. I grew up in Berkshire County, where I started my public service career and I now, I now live on Cape Cod with my husband and my kids. I work as the assistant town administrator in law fleet, which is on the outer Cape. So next up is Kendra.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kendra Curry. I graduated from Westfield State University with my undergraduate degree as well back in two thousand and twenty, working here on my masters as well, and I'm towards the end of that program as well. So I am a nine one dispatcher for a small town in, um, Middlesex County in Massachusetts. I also live in central Massachusetts, and that is, uh, where I'm currently, um, doing a lot of work, so I'm excited to present to you our findings about East Windsor.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Donald Ganley. Um, I also graduated, uh, from Westfield. My undergraduate was in criminal justice and a minor in English. Um, and I'm set to graduate sometime in twenty twenty three, uh, with my masters. Currently, I'm working as a paralegal, um, at an attorney's office in eastern Massachusetts and living in Worcester County as well.
Hi, Melissa Parrish. I have a bachelor's in, of science and accounting and finance from Springfield College, where I was born and raised. Um, currently, I work at Westfield State University as a budget analyst in the strategic finance and institutional planning office, and I hope to finish the MPA program next December.
My name is Lander Armstrong. I'll be happy with my MPA. Like, two weeks on this is over. And hopefully I'll graduate in twenty twenty four where that's when I should do my capstone. I'm currently, I'm just a delivery driver for Domino's. I work a lot of hours. I'm, I'm actually from Jamaica as well, so a lot of this is new to me. So yeah, this, we, we gentlemen, we'll be there.
Hi, uh, my name's Chris Garrity. Um, after the semester, I'll be about halfway through the MK program at Westfield State University as well. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting from UMass Amherst. I also have a graduate level certificate in local government leadership and management from Suffolk University. Um, I've spent most of my career working in municipal finance, auditing municipalities, um, and also serving as the town accountant for the town of Sturbridge, Massachusetts. Um, I recently made a career change actually, and now I'm the senior accountant for our municipal light department in South Hadley, Massachusetts, which is my hometown. Um, I also have served as a appropriations committee member, similar to your, uh, board of finance, uh, select board member there and also town meeting member. We have represented the town meeting. And Melissa will get into our project.
So our project focus, we were tasked by Jason, um, in association with our organizational behaviors course to complete a critical analysis of some of the methods he has employed in East Windsor and identify areas of improvement as well as pose recommendations to improve. So first, we analyze the effectiveness of the passport program, which was implemented in August two thousand twenty two to, uh, support economic development and small business prosperity. The premise of the program is that residents are issued stickers to incent, incentivize them to shop locally. And then once they receive a certain amount of stickers, they're entered into raffles and given the opportunity to win prizes. Um, we also were tasked in performing a critical analysis of East Windsor's website, evaluating the effectiveness, usability, and accessibility, uh, particularly as it related to Jason's communications during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
So there are several methods that we used to collect data that provided us with recommendations that we will be presenting to the board. The first, um, method that we used was a survey. We decided to go with a short survey, it's about thirteen questions, so nothing, you know, too long and crazy for, um, businesses to answer. If this was done through Google Forms, we decided that the virtual aspect of this was going to be the easiest to disseminate, and it was distributed to local businesses, uh, particularly the passport program participants, um, as well as through the Chamber of Commerce. We also, um, conducted several qualitative interviews, uh, with several members of the staff here in East Windsor, so we had, um, Jason Bowser himself. We also interviewed Ruth Ann Calabrese, the director of planning and community. Um, we also interviewed Mike Demato, planning consultant, Danielle Miller, assistant town planner, and Jennifer Sanchez, the administrative assistant. And these qualitative interviews also provided us with insight into internal communication methods within the town offices here. And the, uh, last method that we used to conduct our research was a subjective website comparison, and this was pretty much just us using the town website. Um, we wanted to compare the userability and the accessibility between the website of East Windsor with other town websites in the area. This included Ellington, Summers, Windsor Locks, Enfield, and South Windsor.
Um, so to speak on, uh, as Kendra brought, we did distribute a survey to, um, businesses all across East Windsor, um, many of which were involved in the, um, business passport program. Um, and so we received responses from twenty-four different businesses across East Windsor. Um, and some of the key findings right off the bat, we noticed that essentially every business we got a response from was located in Warehouse Point and Broadbrook. And then another, um, key finding we had was that many of these businesses have been um, working in partnership with the town for over twenty years. Um, over a quarter of the responses we had were for people that have been in business, um, over twenty years. Many of them, um, in business somewhere in between ten and twenty years. And then overall, just a very positive, uh, feedback towards, um, Mr. Bowser and the town overall. As you can see, some of the quotes that we pulled out, um, those are survey responses, uh, directly from, uh, business owners, um, showing that they're overall satisfied. Um, they did have a few suggestions that I thought that we found, uh, to be notable. Um, most, one of the main findings that we had in, in the feedback was just to continue the efforts that are being done currently. Um, overall, everyone's just very satisfied with the way that the town is so helpful and involved. And that's something that they hope to continue. Um, one suggestion from a business owner was to, um, essentially set up a townwide database, sort of, uh, she compared it to, um, like a yellow pages online, um, just specifically for business owners and people that are in the town as well, uh, town residents as well, um, just to kind of more, she essentially explained it as like a Facebook page for people to always have information flowing, um, just to stay in constant contact, um, which led us to the last suggestion of just continuing to build on, um, the community feel in East Windsor.
So through the team's methods and findings, we developed a list of potential short and long-term recommended conveniences. Um, given the short time span of the research that we conducted, we concentrated on recommendations that are attainable and not too far out of reach. It should also be noted that the team was not able to reach out to the residents and gain their feedback. The recommendations are solely based off, um, staff interviews, business surveys, and the team's independent research. The first recommendation is for the town to engage in hiring a communications coordinator. This could be achieved in the short term by adding duties to its existing personnel or creating a new position. Exploration in a shared services contract with a neighboring town could also be an option. Some of the job functions of the town's communication, communication coordinator could be serving as a liaison to East Windsor residents on matters of interest and importance to the community by increasing communications through the development of face-to-face print, video, and website sources such as social media. Developing a comprehensive approach to short and long-term outreach and communication plans in conjunction with municipal officials in the select board by preparing and disseminating to the press and other media in written and verbal form. Developing a comprehensive approach to short and long-term outreach and communication plans in conjunction with municipal officials in the select board by preparing and disseminating to the press and other media in written and verbal form. Coordinates with other departments, community organizations, and the private sector, local businesses in particular, to expand the opportunities to reach the public with timely information on the town's programs, initiatives, and services. Compiling and analyzing data, making recommendations on communication policies and procedures, developing and implementing internal and external communication strategies for town staff. Researching training opportunities for staff in order to provide excellent customer service when disseminating the information to the public. Meeting regularly with town officials in the select board to review the current communication programs, evaluating their effectiveness, and assessing the short and long-term needs on public relations matters.
Uh, the majority of small business tend to be isolated self-managed parties, but at the same time, they're also networking epicenters. And knowing that small businesses interactions tend to be low, the second ring of recommendation, hosting business events, would be a good thing to improve this. A local business community can be established and supported by bigger, more interested parties such as a local Chamber of Commerce. Therefore, hosting town-sponsored events where passport program participants can collaborate with other participants and other small business owners can expand opportunities and encourage more businesses to participate. This expanding the program and possible more room for economic growth within East, uh, East Windsor. The, the answers we got on our survey is one of the main reasons for this recommendation. Uh, Michael Graff says a majority of businesses would support further initiatives like this. And some of the reasons they gave for participating were reaching more members of, of the community and interest in supporting local small businesses. A good way to showcase our small business, and some just like supporting town events as well as someone that might, it's a great concept that may be expanded upon. So finally, move forward from COVID nineteen businesses and individuals would be itching the network, connect and promote their businesses to try and make up for revenues lost during COVID. As well as to, like, by the answer said, it's a great concept to expand on. It would be good to, um, not only make up for loss revenue, but to boost current businesses.
So our, um, third recommendation is to do some updates to the town's website. Um, our town reviewed county's windows website as well as some of the surrounding communities like we mentioned earlier. Just mentioned again, there was, um, South Windsor, Ellington, uh, Windsor Locks, Enfield, and Summers. Um, one of the issues that we had found with the town of East Windsor's website is that unless you already know which webpage that you want to go to, it's a little bit hard to find it. Um, that's kind of a typical issue with municipal websites, so not to pick on them. You know, you feast Windsor, but that's just kind of one of the things that, that you find. There's a lot of information on, on municipal um, website, so that can be a little bit difficult. So we had some recommendations on ways that, um, can improve upon that. Some of the other communities' websites, they used, um, they use thumbnail images to kind of be a little bit eye-grabbing to things that are, are popular, most commonly gone to. Or, um, just things like an, an announcement that, that the community might want to get out there. Sometimes putting an image or something will, um, will help with that. Another function that we found, um, useful was using, um, a more vivid news and announcements section. Um, I know you guys have that when you first land on your, your webpage, but, um, trying to make it a little bit more upfront and center and, and eye-patching might be helpful. Um, that way, if somebody goes to the town of East Windsor's website to pay a bill or renew a dog license or something like that, they may, um, you know, ing- ingest other information that they may not otherwise have, have found. Another function that we found that might be useful is incorporating, um, social media platforms. Um, Ellington and South Windsor did that. Um, that way, if he wants to put something on, um, a town social media platform, it automatically incorporated into the town's website to kind of alleviate some redundancy of having to kind of put on, post something on Facebook or, and then you'd have to go and put it onto the town's website as well. Um, another recommendation with the town's website would be to incorporate a doing business page. Um, there is a lot of information related to the business community on the town of East Windsor's website, but I think if, if that could be centralized through a website update, it would make it a little bit, um, easier for somebody looking to, um, develop a redevelopment or things like that, where they could just go to one location, be able to either flow through the steps that they would need to do if they wanted to participate as a a business in, in East Windsor. I think that may be something that would be be helpful for them. That can be accomplished by a, um, website update. Uh, the last functionality that we think would be helpful by doing a website update would be, um, to incorporate popular functions, um, popular for residents and also for the business community. um in a way of kind of pinning them to either the the top of the the town's website or on a sidebar or location like that. Um, we found that um the communities that did utilize that was it was very eye-catching. You can pin an announcement, things that related to COVID. You could um again, similar to the news and announcements, people would have the ability to receive that information without specifically going and looking for it on whatever webpage that might actually be on. We can actually go to the next. So over the last three months of research analysis, um these were the findings and recommendations that uh our team had for the town of East Windsor, uh ways to prove upon their communication and economic development efforts. Um, we'd like to just take some time to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing our our team to partner with the community to work on this project. Um, we also like to specifically thank uh Jason Bowsit for um his help in in the project. You know, he took a a lot of time out of his Monday night, I think every every Monday night for the last three months to meet with us and do this work. So we'd like to specifically thank him for that. And if there's any uh questions, you'd like to welcome them now.
Well, I think you guys have been great time. Thank you for talking to Steph. No, I I told them um recognizing the two of our municipal employees were in the last group, that this was a better group. Um, in terms of everybody pulling their weight and really diving into the subject matter, it was it it was a really great experience. So you know, kudos to them and your program has run well. Thanks. I was hearing no complaints. I had to contact you like, okay, everything's going right. Um, so one of the things that's me and the the two products are not similar uh between the last year's version and what you guys did this year, but one of your recommendations is a repeat. Um, that because there there is that that uh separation between the two, we really should be paying attention to um how we talk about integrating some sort of coordinations coordinator, because that has been a recommendation from two different graduate groups two years in a row. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna get some really interesting news around the budget um next. But um that's something that that has come up from, you know, educated third parties a couple of times of an area where we can improve. Um, you guys have any questions or comments for the students?
I just want to say thank you for taking the time um to come out and review what's happening in East Windsor. Um, because I kind of chuckled, something sometimes have to when somebody does something on the head. Um, our website, you're absolutely right. If you know where to look, you're gonna find it. But if you don't, you can't find it. I had somebody ask me what was happening at the senior centers the other day and where they could find the menu. And so that's simple. Just go to the news letters on the last page. Um, they wouldn't have known that if I didn't tell them. So kudos to you guys for picking that up. Um, and the other thing is the uh Economic Development um we uh commission um that you said they should uh invite the businesses a little bit more. Um, again, that project is started with that group. Um, but it hasn't gone anywhere yet. So hopefully in reviewing that, they'll start doing something with that again to move forward. But you hit it right on the on the nail. Um, so kudos to you guys and congratulations and hope you guys all succeed on moving forward and welcome to America.
Other questions or comments, Sarah?
Sure. Just want to thank you all very much for your hard work. Um, I'm the liaison to the Economic Development Commission, so I'll be happy to share this with them at their next meeting. Um, and they are planning on, they did recently host a um a networking event here. Was that in the summers? And they're working on um hosting another one in the spring. Um, so we'll pass this on to them and best of luck to all of you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just like say thanks, and I think you've actually given us some useful information. So maybe the project every once in a while since just seems like work. But I think giving them something to think about and and that we can uh maybe do something about. So kudos.
Any any questions or comments from anybody in the audience? Yes, sir. Name an address, please. Yeah, I just like asking you.
Okay, um, yeah, I was gonna save this for published books, right? I mean, this is a good time for this. Um, EDC support. Financially, we're not supporting EDC with beans. And they're looking at limiting the number of meetings for the rest of the fiscal year because they don't have enough money. They have all the meetings that are scheduled.
They they do. That's not why they're looking to limit their meetings, but they they have sufficient funds to hold their their regularly scheduled meetings. They're just looking to reallocate funds for something else.
Yeah, and typically they don't score their budget every year.
Okay, this is what I've been told. But if they're gonna be putting on things, it takes a few dollars to make things happen. And there's probably many other promotional things that EDC could do that they don't consider because funding isn't there. And going back for more funding is a painful thing. It sets the public off in a bad way. So if they have funding upfront new budget year, um then maybe they can do some things they otherwise would not consider. Take the thought, looking for improvement, but this is all fantastic.
Other questions or comments from anybody in the room? Anybody online have any questions or comments? All right, guys. Thank you very, very much. Job well done. We're in recess at seven thirty-five. It is seven forty-three. I'll call me the worst likely order. We've gotten the fun stuff out of the way for tonight. So next up is gonna be a presentation on the rebound. Um, Helen, you want to introduce your guests? Oh, yeah. If you guys want to bring a couple of chairs up, you can join us up here. It's no problem.
Yeah, with me tonight, Jim Williams.
Hello.
And Sue Robinson from Vision Appraisal. Sue was my project coordinator and lead on the retail project this year. She and Jim are here to give um a little bit of background and information about the whole revaluation experience and how it is uh how we process through it. And they're the experts. So I'm gonna turn it over to them. Sue, do you want to?
Okay, I'm Sue Robinson. I work with Vision. I've been with Vision for twenty-two, almost twenty-three years. Of not all as a project manager, but working my way through up and having a lot of it's having gained a lot of experience there. Uh, this is Jim Williams. He does commercial appraisal and uh helps out a lot with all sorts of stuff. And he's been with Vision and other rebal companies for for many years. Um, anyway, this is revaluation is always emotional. Unfortunately, I'm more so on the residential side than the uh commercial side. But it is a process. We are mandated by the state to do this every five years, uh which is a good thing. Uh, just because it's not a political process where someone can decide not to do a revaluation for twenty years and then put their town through a major shock which happens in other states. Um, the goals basically is to analyze the sales, make sure that the um way each property site is being valued is consistent. And the kind of the values are accurate compared to the sales. Revaluation is everything depends on the sales. The sales are the market. The sales, if with a fee appraisal, a fee appraiser is looking at sales with mass appraisal, we are looking at sales to determine the value of the properties in town. It is a reflective process. It's based on sales that have occurred. It's not a projected. We can't project into the future. We have a valuation date. And that's what we have to have to look at. Um, we data collect sales, we data collect permits, we have to make sure the data is up to date. We look online at the sale data um for the to make sure that we have the correct data for what sold. We review the entire town. We drive the entire town and look at every single house. So I'm looking for making sure that there's consistency with the grading, the styles, the um way the land is valued. That kind of thing. We're looking at the property. We're looking at and the condition of the houses and um yeah, making value judgments based on what we see. Then we when we're looking at at the at the project in the beginning, I run a five uh five-year sale date year report. Is my sale median for five years. Um, that would be the appraised value and and before we change the rates, before we start changing rate, we're seeing, looking at current sales and the old the values of properties based on the old rates. Now, the sale ratio is the raised value divided by the sale price. And the appraised value of the property divided by the sale price is the sale ratio. Okay, and and I'm looking at twenty twenty-one. When I ran this, when we first started the project, we had a hundred seventy-four sales. We had a sale median of point seven four, which means we were at a fifty-two percent level of assessment. In Connecticut, you want to be at a seventy percent level of assessment. That's telling me we need to bring values up so we can now be in compliance. There are rules for the statistical rules that we have to uh meet. That's actually those are standardized way beyond Connecticut. That's the International Assessing Officer Office. Yeah, that's uh yeah, assessing. I double O. Thank you. Yes.
So this seventy percent, because we're below that factor.
Um, that's
Does any consideration take into being that is a small town compared to a larger town within the state of Connecticut?
We're looking at the sales. We're looking at the sales in East Windsor.
But you're comparing it to a ratio that's governed by the whole state?
No, it's a whole uh international.
Oh, seven. Yeah, this is using a sale median is how you do. Yeah, that's your, that's your math. For any kind of revaluation, whether or not you're at a hundred percent appraisal equals assessment or in Connecticut, where years ago they determined that they would rather have the assessment be seventy percent of market value.
It's different from a sale median.
Right, so.
So can I interject with some questions while we're on?
You may.
Okay.
You may.
Uh, and I have four pages worth of questions for you guys that I thought would be about ahead of time that are partial specific.
We are not speaking personal specific.
I I understand. I'm a part of that opportunity.
You guys are gonna be getting the other email, whatever specifics. That's
So so not non non partial specific. When when I look at this chart uh at the the first chart at the bottom of page one.
Yeah.
Um, where if you were gonna do twenty twenty-one sale median for twenty seventeen rates of point seven four.
Yeah.
What I'm seeing there is in seventeen, it was point nine seven, then point eight nine, then point nine oh, then point eight six, then point seven four. What's happening there?
The sale prices are going up.
Right now.
When the sale, every when the sale median start going down in value, that means your sale prices are going higher and higher above the appraised value of that house. That's a clear indication that your values are going, that your sale prices are going up. And what we need to do, what what we are tasked to do when we're doing a revaluation is we are tasked to analyze the sales and use the sale prices to calibrate all the building and land rates so that the appraised values are close to the sale prices.
So you want that that decimal number to be as close to one as you can.
To one, but typically, we typically assesses go with a point nine five.
Point nine five, I think one point oh three was the other thing.
Yeah, yeah, we
But one one's the bullseye.
One, one is spot up.
Okay, um, just a grammatical question. In the twenty twenty-one line in that same chart, is that a typo that runs through ten, twenty, one, twenty? Should that be
That is as of that that date. That's when we started the project. I didn't have the twenty. It should be, it should be um twenty twenty-one, yes, type of. Thank you.
Because this is, this is like
Yeah.
learning Chinese and French and
I understand. So yeah, that's why, that's why the question's a good yes type.
So they don't take any consideration for those that are bidding above the sale price of a house that put up because of shortage of housing in the state?
We, I will uh tell you, we don't know often. We usually don't know if if they're bidding up or not. Sometimes we do find out when we're looking into the sale and a lot of times my value is going to be below what they paid for that house. If people really overpay, my value is not going to get to where they paid for. My, the these appraised values compared to the sales can be right on. They can be above the sale price a little bit. They can be below the sale price.
But you're not actually looking at a particular sale that went fifty thousand dollars ahead. That's going to drop.
That that may, that may, that that sale will show up as an outlier, like like I will be below that price.
But if you start to see ten of those, so if you see ten ranches selling at sixty thousand dollars overvalued, you're gonna start appraising um or assessing the value on all ranches at overvalue because
If everybody, if there's one or two that are overvalued and others that are not a majority are not up there, we're gonna be with the majority of the sales. If everybody is paying that up here, then that's the market.
So, right, and I understand that. And I don't have any issue with if I'm buying or selling a house and and you know, the market drives the price. I I get that. My concern is for the, you know, and and this is a true example, but the relatively lower income eighty-year-old woman who's battling cancer, who has been in the same house for fifty-five years. She didn't do anything to affect the market value of the house.
Right.
But we're gonna hit her with that new value.
I understand.
That's that's a real concern.
And that happens all the time. Every time we, yeah, every valuation is done. That that is a possibility of what can happen because that's
So that's gonna put
That's the market.
So predicament is the balloon payments ten years ago where
Not necessar- not necessarily.
Payments and then when the balloon payments were due, foreclosures everywhere.
Not necessarily.
Uh, so
Yeah, okay. So the second church shows where
Just before you continue on that same chart, so I'm seeing here in two thousand seventeen, you know, you were near the one market was bad, right?
That was twenty seventeen was rebound. Yeah, point ninety-seven. That's that's basically
Thirty-eight sales.
Because it's the last quarter.
Only a quarter.
It's only the quarter. It's from ten, one, twenty seventeen. All year. Okay.
Good point.
But that's the rebound. So that's you would expect to be at point nine seven.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
And you have, you know, consistently straight line have gone up in value every year. The sales prices have gone up and down.
Certainly, the market has kind of gone out of control.
Right. The market has gone up. It is not, you know, going up quite like two thousand, you know, four, five and six, but it has gone up.
Well, and we know what happened in seven, though.
I know, but this is not the same. Financing is different. Yeah, okay. Okay, so basically, we have to look, we start, we look at the land sales. We set the we use the sale prices to calibrate all our building and land rates. Um, and what we're want to do is have the sale prices, the appraised prices be close to the sale prices. So that will uh get us statistically having a good coefficient dispersion. Think of a scattered chart. When we first started out, these are our sale prices and The appraised appraisals were. Way far away from the sale prices, so things are scattered out like this. Now, the C O D, the coefficient of dispersion number is lower, it's within range.
You're on chart number two now?
No, we're down the second.
Second.
Second page. Okay. We fi- we're finalizing with the last year of sales. Uh, hundred and eighty nine sales, we have a point nine three median sale ratio and nine point nine one. Yep. Eight point three.
You're, you're got a different page now.
You're on, you're on the second chart overall.
Yeah, and.
So I have two, two copies of the same document, one has your letterhead on it, which was given to me earlier today, one was handed out tonight, and this is, this has the second chart on page one. It's the same information.
Yeah, I have. He's looking at that, okay.
It's the same.
You're looking at the second, okay.
And you're looking at, I'm on this one.
Yeah, I've, I've moved on from.
So that's what he's looking at.
Yeah.
We click over. We're up to this one.
Yeah, and we're running here, and he, yeah, ninety three median with an eight, actually it's an eight point three six.
We're see, we're sorry, this isn't coinci- I'm not sure where you are, I apologize.
Can you show me where on the page you're looking here?
Um, she's in the second paragraph that is. In the writing.
We have a different one, Amy, we don't have digital.
Yeah, she, this is, the one that was handed out is not the same one that we were given earlier tonight.
So right below the chart, is there some writing on the top of the next page?
You're using a different one, no, I did a.
So I'm showing you what we got.
Okay, cause I don't see what we got. Okay. Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
That where we are at is we're, we're in compliance at this point.
So why am I saying?
Yeah, I got that, now this sound.
We have to use.
So that, I don't know where she, where she making that change.
Eight point three six C O D, it's middle of page two, sales analysis one year. So what might be easier is if you guys just bring a couple of chairs up here so we can point the pages.
That's what the eight point three.
Cause I, I had some questions on the second chart. Uh, we got ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
So again, looking at the sale, I'm going to go back to chart number two on the document. Again, understanding the sale median is supposed to be between point nine five and. If I'm looking at twenty twenty two, point nine two number, does that show that the valuations from last year and twenty twenty one were right about where they should be? And that they're slightly higher in twenty two?
The value, yes, the, the values are still, yes.
It also shows that there was. What is the one point one eight to seventeen gross under value or gross over?
That means, that means that those, I'm not trending seven.
Yeah.
So that's showing the, the older sale, because in twenty seventeen, the sales were lower. Compared to the twenty twenty two value, it's showing us being, oh. Or a higher sale median, like, wait, okay. It, it's got to do with, so it's the same, it's the same sale prices, it's just now the building rates have been calibrated and. Change some that now the sales are working. Here, so they're going to be high, so the appraised values are going to be higher than the sales here. Yeah.
But I'm, you know, my, my confusion, and this is the first time, so I apologize, and I don't, we just, we need to have you irritated, and that's what I'm being attentive. Can we have one conversation and talk about things?
This is confusing, Alex. This, this is confusing as it is, it's on the track, so.
I, I, I get that the, the sale price of homes are driving up.
Right.
Everybody's. Host values, I get that. But. A new house compared to a thirty five year old house in town that's similar in size and similar in style. They're going to carry the burden for that new house. Correct?
Not necessarily, the house is depreciating, so we take depreciation.
You do take depreciation, okay, I missed that somewhere along the trail, but we do depreciate.
Analyzing sales, we're looking at many, many different things to be able to determine where we're going to make the changes in the building rates. Because we have to update the depreciation, and do, and then calibrate that depreciation. We have to get our base, normal average houses, working, the new construction working. Uh, we look at building size. Because there's building size adjustment a lot in many places, because the smaller, more affordable homes have been. Going up in value a little relatively higher than. Some of the big white elephant things, we had to make adjustments to building size based on market. We're working at, uh, at grand, we're looking. Lot signs, we're looking at all sorts of. Things to make sure that we are. Equitably. Valuing things and also to see, yeah, where do the changes made now? So we agree are at now for just above this, uh, sale day quartile. The overall level of assessment. Be within ten percent, it'd be seventy percent assessment ratio, our nine point two four median sale ratio. Is at a sixty percent assessment level and that was. It's fine with, with the state of Connecticut.
Is that to the, is that to the, the, um, taxpayers benefit or detriment? Benefit.
Benefit.
Explain why, please.
Uh, we're assessing the properties five percent lower than the actual market value.
Okay, thank you.
But then we'll use the seventy percent, which is governed by law to calculate.
Right, so that, so, so it's essentially sixty, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, that makes sense to me now.
Yeah.
We try to be under.
Under, okay, and that's your comment that you mentioned earlier, that's what's driving that is you want sixty four percent, okay.
Yeah, I want, I mean, want to be able to pass our tests. But we, we, we always pull back a little bit, we're never right at the ten one. Number, okay, we pull back, but always. With revaluation. You values and will, sale prices will always change after a evaluation. Which is why in the other five years, you have another revaluation. Because every, yeah, market changes constantly. Uh, we have also, uh, we've got a few other tests that we have to, um, to pass, there's the unsold property test. Uh, basically wants to make sure that the sales and the non-sales are being valued equitably, we are passing that. And the price related differential. So.
I'm sorry, can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the unsold property test.
Yes.
So right now, you say in two thousand twenty. One, we sold a hundred and twenty three homes.
Hundred and eighty four homes.
I'm doing, where do you get?
For, for the full year, ten, twenty one to ten, to nine, thirty, twenty two, I've got a hundred and eighty four sales.
I don't have that anywhere.
Oh, it's.
Yes. We haven't gotten that page yet.
We got one eighty four.
Okay.
I don't have one eighty four.
It's on the next page.
I have two pages.
See one eighty four? Oh, that twenty twenty two is, that's at the calendar year, so if that's, okay, I see where you're getting here, that, that's a calendar year, that's fine.
All right. So. It's one eighty four. And you compare that against. The non. Sold properties and how many non-sold properties do we have in town?
That would be.
No idea, right?
Four, four thousand.
Four thousand nine hundred and seventy two. Brand list.
And what do you do with that? Do you come up with an average?
Wait, the test is going to see what the percentage change was as a group.
Yeah.
For the sales.
Yeah.
And what the percentage change was as a group for the unsold. And the difference between the, those are, the, the difference between those two numbers has to fall within. A certain parameter of a point nine five to four to one point oh five.
So, okay, so order to do that, because these houses sold for more.
No, it is, it's not.
You got to bring up the lower.
We want, we want to make sure that. This is why we use the sales to calibrate the building rates and then apply that to everybody, that way, the. The sales, that way we do pass the unsold test. Because if you just. Make changes to. To the sales and not to. Instead of changing rates based on your analysis of the sales. That's when we run into troubles with the unsold. Would you have to use the sales to calibrate the rates and then apply those rates to the rest of the town? The next test is the price related differential, that's measuring, are we valuing? Appraising the. Lower price properties at the same rate as the higher priced properties. So we're not, are we overvaluing one or the other, and, and. This is showing that we're not moving equitable to. Through a full scale of, of price ranges.
May I help you with the acronyms in the next section, R N S and C and I, I assume C and I is commercial industrial, but I can't figure out what the S is in the R N S.
Uh, especially is P A one.
Oh, so it's residential and special use?
Yeah. Anyway, this is just a summary of the overall change. That we're seeing. Basically residential is in P A four ninety, the overall change is. The median change is forty percent up. Commercial is up ten percent. Because commercial numbers are larger. The old, the town itself is. As a whole, the taxable grand list is twenty nine percent. The rest of the, uh, real estate portion is twenty nine percent increase.
Um, so can you explain what comes next? The, the appeal process, the hearing process.
Okay.
All that stuff.
Okay, yes, absolutely, um, everybody will be getting their, their value change notice. There's instructions on that notice where they can. Uh, go online, work, call Vision, and make an appointment for an appeal, they have a choice, they can do a telephone. Informal meeting. Or we have some in-person meetings here at the town hall. Telephone is easy, it is. Takes less time out of your day, that type of thing, but we are accommodating. Um, whatever, yeah, choices people want to make. We have information, a, an email where if anybody needs to send us any information specific to their property. They can send it to us that way. The purpose of these. Informal meetings, it's for the property owner to have the time to stay in the middle of this whole mass appraisal. Hey, look at me, this is what's going on with my individual property. This happened, that happened, this is going on. Yeah, next door, there's, right away over here or something like that. They get to tell us something that we never would have known, we got them telling us. And this is their time to review their card, that's their responsibility as a property owner is to make sure that card data is correct. And, uh, so this is their time to, to continue to be involved. Yeah, in the revaluation process.
So this says that the letters were mailed November twenty ninth?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes, that's when they get. Yeah, no, 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 what if it was mailed?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Two days ago.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, November twenty.
November twenty nine.
And why are we reading this? They've already been mailed out.
Where, I don't want to be. Uh, cause this really is immaterial to the, um, appeals process, my concern with the appeals process is that. Uh, people haven't even gotten their notices yet, they're not going to know that they get a feel on Monday. Um, so I'm concerned that the appeals process is going to be compressed and people are going to miss an opportunity.
They won't miss an opportunity. I've got. A lot of, oh. Slots open right now, I have people in reserve, and, uh, we've got, you know, the next couple of weeks, we have. Many people available.
What, in what is mailed, it has all these dates and everything in there, how are we going to spread the word that they can appeal?
What was?
To be. Everyone needs to know.
Much of that, well.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't email.
So, I mean, but the, what was mailed is, here's your new valuation, here's how you can call in.
All the information is on there, there's information regarding if you, yeah, you can make your appointment with us. If you want to make it, yeah.
Out of a hundred of appeals, how many result in a, you know, a reduction to, you know, what the person is asking for or in any way to the valuation?
It, it varies.
One, I don't have.
It varies. Um, most of the time, it's. Generally speaking, most of the time. It's an explanation of the process. It's asking, how can we help you, tell me about your property and they mostly.
So not very often.
It can, it can, it does, it does, it does happen, we can find out, oh. We need to look at this, this and this property. As well. That type of thing. But. We really need to, you know, look at the sales. And, uh. Bring that to people's attention, not necessarily, oh, my property increased all this amount, we have to. Speak about, this is what the sale.
I mean, there's obviously, you know, a lot of math behind this and everything, my problem is, is it takes a point in time. It is the height of the market, the market, as everybody knows, is draining off already as we speak, has been. Will continue as far as everybody knows and can see in the future for the next year, maybe two. So, you know, I'm thinking about people who, you know, are getting some equity in their house. And number one, the town comes in, takes the cream right off the top, and then their house isn't even, you know, worth as much the next year or the next year or the next year.
After every revaluation, the values have. Will change.
Yeah, well, in this case, but my point is, in this case, we're going to look at a forty percent increase on the residential, right? And none of these houses are going to be worth that next year, not one of them. And inflation is still.
Forty year high.
Right.
Well, this is.
I guess it's some of the government decisions we need to make.
Evaluation.
Be on the.
Add valuation, yeah, valuation based on a five year basis.
It's, it's another reason why we trend these sales to be more conservative now, because we are forecasting the market to go down. Uh, ten years ago, uh, when the market's going up and we're in the rebound, by the time we usually sent the notices that the homes are still going up. Those towns want us to be at ninety eight, ninety nine percent of market to capture what they're predicting in the future. So this is kind of the way that we seem to trend or soften that impact. We have some flexibility there to do that then.
So.
We, we, we still, we still have it.
I can be less tactile at times and I apologize.
I've met with them twice primarily, but we've been, I've got it covered.
Yeah, point six four that you're using.
Right.
Can we drop that down to point six zero to make it applicable to those that have no.
We'll have to re-notify everybody, but.
So that's an option? Cause I have no problem notifying people, I can.
Let's get, okay, notices have gone in.
Which I'm surprised, because I didn't think they've gone out yet, and that concerned me because I have some other issues and all the things that I wanted to. Which I'm surprised, because I didn't think they've gone out yet, and that concerned me because I have some other issues and all the things that I wanted to acknowledge. Later, um.
If if we bring the values down, if we bring the values down ten percent.
Yeah.
Uh, the tax rate is just going to creep up ten percent to offset it. So our goal is to maintain equity. The uh values, uh, but we're not targeting, you know, the hundred percent.
The tax rate is going to be based on our spending.
Right, yeah, because that's, you know, that's the.
The issue isn't, isn't the increased values in a relationship to the, to the. Issue is the disproportionate shift of value. I spent a week looking at the rebuild. So this is. So the the guys with some of these mansions are going to be fine. The guys in starter homes. Are screwed. That's been a trend we've seen for.
That is because the starter home market has. Always held its value and and, yeah, with great vigor.
And and I understand your concern is is the the performance of the market. My concern is the effect on the residents.
I understand.
Um, and there is, it's not just as simple as saying values are up, so the mill rate is coming down. It's the shift in the responsibility along. The the residential taxpayers. The people who can least afford it in in times of of economic strife are kind of getting healed. And and that's what we are all concerned about and trying to figure out how to how to lessen that impact on those folks who are really going to be in dire straits. With, you know, home heating, ever stores going up fifty percent and gas prices finally coming down and having, it's been a long year. There's, there's concerns that we have for the impact on people.
I understand that. And what we have to do is, i- if this is a, as far as, yeah, our analysis, that's a blind analysis.
Yeah.
We have no idea who lives there. They could be purple polka dotted. We don't know what's in their bank account. Have no way of knowing. We are not. That that is not in the equation.
I get it.
Yeah, the charge of the retail is to meet the parameters we have to meet. And the charge of. Rest of you is to figure out how to lessen the impact if possible.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not looking to shoot the messenger, but I mean, you guys are easy targets, but we understand.
I'm just practicing toward what I'm going to get on the other side of your table.
I understand.
Any other questions or comments? How are the new numbers on G I S?
Yes.
Well, uh, they're on the assessor page.
Website.
Property record cards. I don't know, I, G I S, I'm not sure how often they update. But it is on.
V G S I website.
V G I, uh, V G S I website or the assessor page, property record cards on the town website.
Now, Amy and I have spent a lot of time working on this and for your, your knowledge, we do know that the mill rate is going to go way down. Uh, but we don't know specifically where way down yet because we don't know what the personal property grant list is going to look like. We don't know what motor vehicle grant list is going to look like. We don't know what state aid is going to look like. So we can't. I don't want to say a number because I don't want something to get out there. We we can't accurately predict specifically what it's going to be yet, but we we do know that the mill rate. Will come down. Um, and all things being equal, that's really great. It's just my concern about the the shipping burden of the lower end of the economics spectrum.
So tomorrow, when people start looking online, then instead the website's been updated. They're not going to know that. They're going to see dramatic increase from people.
Yep.
It is involved in their, not to apply to current mill rate to the new value.
But that doesn't mean anything to anyone when they look at it. Parameters that you have to follow, I get all that, and I guess my beef could be at the legislative building shortly.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, um, but looking at something and not knowing what the no rate is.
Is very difficult.
It's difficult.
Yeah.
For anything, but when you're looking at something and and none of us were prepared to see that tonight. Uh, we're not prepared to answer questions. I got to start hitting us shortly. Um, so. That's just by virtue, but that's just me. And then that went out, um. State law requires, it says the all property is seventy percent of its current fair market market value, then you go on to propose a certain seventy in margin value that's over. First, please note that the new assessment, not the market value. Value in the home set sold.
Well, it's the priority of of us that we have to analyze the actual market sale value. And come up with the fair market value by statute and then apply the seventy percent sales.
I I understand that, but as a layperson reading that. It's like double talk. Fair market value means something here, but don't use a fair market value because. It's could be different than what we just assessed you at of next July. Because we know things are going to get worse over the next six months. It's almost like a disclaimer on here.
No, it's not. It it I don't, it's, it's not saying that. It's, it's saying, don't use the, don't use the old mill rate. Uh, if there's anything, yeah, the seventy percent always makes it very confusing. Um, thank you, state of Connecticut.
Well, don't think this the wrong way, but I mean, you speak this language.
Yeah, we don't.
We've got eleven thousand constituents don't.
I didn't.
And and I'm.
Yeah, it's, and I don't speak it well.
But I, there are things in here where it's like, I have no idea what you're talking about. The alphabet soup, the the this relates to this in this way. I'm sure you guys know what you're talking about. But we can't explain it. And that that's where we're struggling is because we have to explain a, of all things, a math-based technical process. That. Is is just going to, it's not going to sound well on mainstream.
And basically, the information tonight on these sheets. Are more of backup of. How we arrived at the values, what we were guided by as parameters. How we came to the values. But if all boils down to market value sets the market, we have to analyze the sales, which is the market. And then come up with the values at seventy percent.
Um, but but the issue, the issue here, Helen, though, is that if this was modest, that's fine. But, you know, if I'm again thinking with the the lady who's lived in her house for fifty-five years, she's not buying or selling.
I.
She's.
I a hundred percent agree with you, and I know I threw this out the other day and it wasn't too impressive, but. I own a house in Waterbury that's doubled. It went from a sixty thousand dollar value to a hundred and twenty-two. This year, revale because of the market in Waterbury. I don't like it. I understand it. But.
The. Real estate value in that town is much greater than the real estate value. Size-wise, size-wise, so you're going to.
Well, the percentages of increase are pretty close to the same thing we're seeing here.
Yeah, we're not waterbury.
City, citywide, but I'm, I'm, the, the point is, I understand that. I don't like it either. It's state mandated, we have state guidelines. We have no choice in how we, how we do this. The procedures that were used were valid. They were devised and guideline by the state. That's the only thing these papers are saying. Um, yes, it's difficult for for the taxpayer who receives a notice. We try our best to explain the process, and that's why they do have the right to appeal. Both to make sure everything's correct, use with vision, but also if they still are. Not satisfied that it's an equitable value, they have the right to appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Applications have to be made in writing by February twentieth, and the board will make an appointment for them to go before the board. So there are two opportunities to go before the board.
Any other comments, questions, really ask your questions.
It's easier to answer questions than to try to present. These pages.
I mean, you gotta hear him starting on the fifth, which is on Monday.
If we get calls, if we, we've extended the timeframe for the here.
Are we?
They're not going to have.
Exactly, that's where I'm going. They just got mailed out in the weekend.
Tuesday, yeah. They do have, they do have on to.
The twelfth.
You need to tell people something, otherwise the letter gets put aside.
Yeah, they, people don't react if they think they have two or three weeks to react.
The dates get, you know, we can add. Open more dates.
Everyone dating that request.
A lot more schedules as as, yeah. And fill, and fill those as, as.
I mean, I'll.
We can.
I'll excuse myself on the board of lookman here, but I, as a resident, when I get mine, I know I need time to go through it.
Right.
And 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 evaluate, evaluate the process, and that's going to take me, you know, all day and probably done some. Once I get over my irritant when I first see it and I compare it to Zillow and I compare it to.
And and you'll probably talk to your neighbor.
What my house is worth.
Very good, thanks for all this like that. Yeah.
Hey, give me a mortgage on what you just told me my house was valued at. Thank you very much, and I'll turn around and I'll pay it off.
We, we hear that all the time. Do you want to buy my house for this?
I mean, you know, so as as a resident, and it's not you guys' fault. You did your job and I'm not criticizing your job, um. But it's just when people or laypeople and they're laying out. What they thought was going to happen and now what is happening. It's dramatic and it's going to be traumatic for some people, um. And I I'm just thinking back to the balloon payments, you know, buy a house now because, you know, I can get this balloon game and I don't have to worry about it for so many years. And, you know, things are going to get much better. Well, it didn't, and all those projections are out there. Now I've got this example of the woman that now, because. Supposedly your house is at a fair market value based upon everything that's happened in the uptick in the sale price and all of that, um. That person's taxes are going to go up at the end of the day. Someone care about. The house is sitting over on the street that's worth five hundred thousand dollars, cares about her neighbor's house. Now you're at the same as first, but now they're taking the hit for that more expensive house.
We do.
Because it's factored in, um, you know, no matter how you look at it, there's some factor, whether it's five percent, ten percent, or two percent, there's a little factor there.
Just, just kind of digressing, but keeping with that thought, we do on the assessor's page. Have the listing of um information for the homeowners benefit program through the state. Um, and additional veterans programs that are available, disability, total disability. So we also have other information regarding that.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just going back myself as an individual, not speaking for the board. So much on work, it's like, as an individual, back in two thousand seventeen, I can remember going and appealing with the vendor at that time, which was with this group. Uh, with the vendor at the time, um, and said, according to state law, I can't sell my house because I have an underground oil pit. Um, I have a water problem that's created by the town and I got received a cease and desist order for channeling out the road so that nobody would get in an accident. By cease and desist and the accident happened, you know, so not a good move by somebody. But anyway, um. Guy got up and said, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know. When I come down, um, that was the last I ever seen of that man. So you didn't even get the fair shake there. Not saying, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Those are frustrations that I have. What happens if somebody comes in and they don't know the process, but they know they can't accord what's happening. They come to it, do we just brush them off? Go in and actually value their home?
I will, we will go through the, the information on the card, make sure that's correct. We'll take a look at what sales are around there. And do some research on it as well. And then they get, whoever comes in.
Right.
Gets another notice. There is. It is their, the hearing is, it's their time to talk about their.
Individual.
Their individual past, their issue, same as you did.
Yeah.
The same as you did. You're not going to hear, oh, that at that point in time.
Right.
If it's going to be changed, what the change is going to be because there are other people, other hearings, and there may be. Uh, something, well, oh, this person, this person, this person, this person came in, oh, this, we need to fix.
Maybe that neighborhood needs to be.
So we're, we're, we're in the process into the informal process. It's to take, for us to take in information. And then we.
I'll put my hat on this.
They're looking up what you guys did to their houses. I wish. Well, in my case, it's more.
Yeah.
Mine's sixty-five.
And basically tonight, all we can talk about is the assessment and the process.
Yeah, Helen, you're out of the room. So the the valuation percentage that you guys have assigned is point six four. Um, Maria asked if that could be lower to point six zero.
It would probably throw up our parameters that the state requires. Um, so it was.
Right at the very edge, so it might make it a little sticky, but.
What, what are three basis points get us?
It's not going to cure sixty-five percent is not, is going to, not going to shrink to twenty percent.
Oh, you're using my house as the actual example? Great, let's use that.
Get down, if you go down three basis points, you can bring down three points.
Oh, so it's that was that. So, so Charlie's at a forty percent increase. Okay.
You were at seventy-one percent.
He's, he's not the worst, huh? Okay.
Okay.
My issues are going to be with legislature, so.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, this, well, the process is what it is. I think it should be against the law that you could have this kind of increase. So on that point, we, we do have options that are available to us. Um. I, I back in, so earlier today, uh, Amy, Helen and I met with undersecretary Martin Heft from O P M. Uh, to talk specifically about what our options are, and uh, the undersecretary agreed to come to our meeting on the fifteenth. Um, and explained, basically rehash the conversation we had today, which does provide that there are options that are available. Um, all of them have pros and cons. All of them have different implementation um requirements. Um, so we'll talk much more about that on the fifteenth when the undersecretary is here. Um, I will tell you. Although I've had a a fair number of sleepless nights over this, over the last three weeks. Uh, after the conversation with with uh, undersecretary Heft today, I think things, we have pathways. It's just we need to decide which ones we want to pursue. But you're right, I wouldn't mind taking a hammer in the legislature over this.
I mean, you look at our neighbor Massachusetts, they adjust per, by the market every year. And then they revale every three years. But at least it keeps it more steady and more equitable and if the market's going up that year, it goes. But it's not all at once.
And. The towns we've been working in have been anywhere from thirty to thirty percent increase.
And where are we?
Forty.
Forty.
So we're not alone in this mess.
I'm, I'm sure the eleven thousand taxpayers will appreciate.
Because they got. Less to compare against. Right?
Well, Southon's is up this year, Glasson Berry's up this year, Brandy's up this year. Glad here was Enfield Vernon. Uh, was Summers in there last year?
Was tart bird.
Was darker one up.
New Haven.
I mean, the circumstances we're fighting, if, you know, if you're going to call this the tail end of the COVID economy, where, where we are. In an unfortunate position is that our last rebuild was just before the COVID. So then bang, everything went crazy. And so we didn't capture any of that curve. We, we, we did last time at the bottom.
Right.
And now we're at the top, probably.
The front row. I'll not say, I was not saying, I was looking to see if there was any indication of values going down as of October one.
We haven't seen.
They were not.
But they're slowing down.
It sounds for the, the last, for the, for twenty twenty-two, the numbers of sales are similar to. Twenty twenty, the left hand line of twenty twenty, the numbers of sales went up in twenty twenty-one. Second, third, and fourth quarter, that's when your numbers went up, now, what you're having is your, your numbers are dropping back to the twenty twenties level.
I see that as cooling, you don't see that as cooling off?
I see that as one.
Stabilizing.
But the prices are holding.
Until, until interest rates catch up and then that'll push down.
And that is, and that is.
You guys only dealing with this, I get it.
Yeah, we have to deal with the fact of correct.
And we're gonna take your information from the past and try and do the best we can to protect the future.
Yeah, it, it's, it's kinda like. It's convoluted, yeah.
You have any questions, comments, anything to add?
I will say, the first thing I learned was that they actually price adjust the square footage and that's where the prices actually come from, based on the sales. So basically, a house that used to cost ninety-four dollars a square foot, that's now selling for a hundred and twenty, is where your people who didn't sell are getting their increases from.
Yeah.
So it's really on a square footage deal.
Yeah, that's one of the factors, it's one of the many.
So I go back to my original thinking, a hundred and thirty-eight houses that sold. Driving up, a person that's not selling.
Exactly, that, yeah, appraisal is based on what is sold, whether it's a fee appraisal or not, it's based on what has sold.
Well, thank you for letting me take my frustrations out on you and do apologize. I'm not criticizing your job.
I. I'm not feeling criticized, it's a, it's a way to be, I know, and I understand what you are going to be dealing with, because that's, it's always. An issue for, for people when, whenever revaluation is done, whether or not it's a small house, or it's someone who's been. In a big town through generations and the prices have gone up crazy around them.
I mean, if you're willing to sell your house. You're not gonna sell it now because. You're not gonna be able to afford to sell your house.
That is part of why the, the inventory is dropping, because people are saying, no, I'm not gonna sell more, I've got my three percent mortgage, I don't wanna go get this mortgage.
Interest rates and inflation?
Definitely, it's like, I'm staying put unless I have to move, I'm staying put.
Well, I know you've had it yesterday and I got a worse.
Well, mine. Helen, you're trying to get rid of that heavy.
It's over a year, a raised range, right?
Insert.
So your square footage price in two thousand seventeen was eighty-seven dollars a square foot, it's a hundred and twenty-two dollars now. Your square foot. And the math works out on these, it's pretty close.
Pretty good.
Mine went up sixty-one percent.
Yeah, what, what, what type of house do you?
Colonial.
Colonial? Uh, was seventy-four dollars, now it's a hundred and twenty-two dollars, would, would you go up sixty-one? Yeah, you're supposed to go up sixty-five, so we'll take the rest, please. You know, once, they're both pretty much caves, okay, go get it. Was eighty, now one sixteen, it's more than forty-five percent. There it, no, I was. Okay, well, you can, she'll, she'll square up there.
Yeah, you guys had this.
All right, thank, thank you, so again, uh, undersecretary Heft will be here in two weeks, there are options that we can consider, um. They all have upsides, they all have downsides, and we'll have to figure out what we wanna do.
Thank you.
There is an answer.
Yes.
Every five years, everybody should be required to sell.
I'd like to find some humor in.
Yes. The numbers, the numbers that are out there, if you went on my website and saw the value, what the letters went out with. I mean, the actual brand, like, don't you find off until January?
Okay. Too much fun, um, speaking of that, let's talk about the budget. I got, I got better grouping. Um, so I sent around to you guys by separate cover a draft of the, um, the budget guidelines for department heads. Um, recognizing that this is one of those things that's going to be coming and after your feedback two weeks ago. Um, so, did you have any changes or, or revisions to this? Could be.
No, I thought it was good.
Go ahead.
Just minor thing.
Yeah.
You sent that a letter out to department boards, commissions, and volunteer organizations. Uh, and then you go on to say, um, the, the last two years of our challenges, many of us expect to experience, nonetheless, town staff have remained dedicated. I think it should be town staff and ancillary groups, honorary groups, I don't know how you wanna word it.
Volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it should go out. They should be recognized because they also, um, did they do diligence, and then going on, thank you for a job well done for improving upon. Um, East Windsor's goals of customer service and internal fiscal improvements, rather than East Windsor better and better year after year. We have, thank you for a job well done, you know, for making East Windsor better and better year after year, thank you for a job well done, and for improving upon. East Windsor's goal of customer service and internal fiscal improvements. Only because we've been driving for better customer service, which, thank you for the letter that the person wrote. And. And making sure that everybody's being fiscally responsible within their daily. Doings, um. Even. This board, uh, I saw somebody return these clips, um, in bags, and they get put for reuse, um. Something as minor as this. Are being recycled because we are trying to be fiscally responsible, um. And I don't care. Here you can revert it anyway, you think that that's just my comment.
I can't read this, we, that. Customer service as well.
And, uh, internal fiscal improvements.
Okay.
And then the last line. Um, we appreciate your role in making East Windsor a town that is a wonderful place to live and work. Um, we appreciate your role in making East Windsor a town that takes pride in the town's future. So they just might suggest, and you won't have to take them, but.
Anything else?
No, other than that, the substitution. Is very good. And that's not criticizing what your role is just. For a second, because if you pretend it is the right.
They use the same word every year, I just update it. Alright, so, so, um, for those who are interested, I'll get to the, the meat of what this, uh, is doing, so I might read the whole thing, but. Um, the meat of this says that, um. Actually, maybe I will, I'll read, I'll read these three pertinent paragraphs. Um, once again, we begin the budget process, residents in our community are facing significant, uh, financial challenges, fuel costs remain far too high. Evergreen sources pushing a major rate hike, inflation is at a forty-year-high, interest rates are increasing monthly. The statutorily required property evaluation will, will reflect significant growth in property values. All these issues are putting an addition, an additional burden on our constituents. Our constituents do not expect government to solve all their problems, but they do expect government to understand their problems. To that end, we're asking all departments to look for ways for addressing their budgetary needs while finding possible cost savings. Departments are instructed to limit their requests, the contractual or operational increases only, no new projects, positions, or programs should be included in department budgets beyond those that are currently in effect. Furthermore, departments should expect that any surpluses historically returned to the general fund will be eliminated through the budget process. We're asking existing appropriated departments to refrain from any additional funding exclusively of contractual obligations or operational expenses such as fuel costs. Um, those, that's really pertinent. That's really pertinent for the, the budget submissions. So, um, there's no other changes or corrections, we'll get those out to folks tomorrow.
I, I would recommend the sound. Budget calendar, it's put into the, obviously, you can crush book. Thing you have it.
You mean, it's the button. Yeah, they don't, they don't come out till, uh, first or, or the year or something.
You make sure we'll get to put in those books, Jeff.
Um, okay, several versions. Alright, so let's talk budget calendar. So this follows largely the same calendar process that we've used in the past, um, Charlie and Sarah, I know you guys have some dates that are typically a problem. All I did here was shift, uh, shift them around a little bit. Um, but I don't know if I hit anything that is typically a problem for you guys.
Did good.
No, this is great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, let me just. Well, with this, let me just double check that I didn't hit a Saturday. Cause I might have. Sorry, it's actually wouldn't kill me. Um, so for our workshops.
Friday.
Budget workshops fifteenth and sixteenth, it's good. Seventeenth is a Friday. I don't care, you guys care?
Don't care.
And then March third is also a Friday.
But we don't. Always usable either.
Well, let's, let's run it that way, if we need to, um, reschedule, we can reschedule. Good?
Enough for now.
Okay, um, that motion to accept the budget calendar is presented.
We accept the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget calendar presented.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
And I'll be looking forward, forward to seeing fourteen, I know what my mortgage is gonna be, so I can calculate what, what's my first taxes gonna be.
I won't say. Um, alright, so. The Greater Together Community Foundation has got another round of awards, um, a number of these folks need. I know, I saw that too. Um, a number of these folks have, um. Will be the fiscal sponsor because of the, uh, the Harvard Foundation for Public Givings requirements. They, they assume, they being the Harvard Foundation, assumed that because you have East Windsor in the name, you were necessarily associated with East Windsor in a couple of cases. Um, we know because they requested that the American Legion, uh, would like to be, would like us to be their fiscal sponsor. Um, American Heritage River Commission, the BMX Skate Park. And Parks and Recreation are already under our fiscal umbrella, so I would need a motion to, uh, serve as the fiscal. Uh, fiscal sponsor for East Windsor Garden Club and East Windsor Housing Authority.
Make a motion that we accept. East Windsor Garden Club, East Windsor Housing Authority to act as a fiscal sponsor. Um, in conjunction with the, uh, giving.
Made in second, is any discussion?
I'm sorry, my finger just felt like I'm looking at water.
All in favor? opposed? I think you're good. Thank you.
You sat, you sat here all this time for that?
For what, for rebound?
Oh, believe me, she's, and she's my teammate here. You, you don't leave your CPA on the bench for something like that.
I'm learning way more about rebound than I ever thought I wanted to know.
Love the aging process.
So we are up to, uh, review and approve the, uh, professional services agreement regarding state bond funds for lights in the playground. So this is a contract, we have been awarded, as you all know, we've been awarded, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars for these two projects, the installation of lights at the Abbey Road Soccer Facility. And a new playground at East Windsor Park, um, this is a, a boilerplate, um. Document that is approved as deformed by the Office of the Attorney General, uh, we need to, uh, you guys need to authorize my signature on it. Um, well, you probably don't because we've discussed this a number of times, we voted on, but just, just out of an abundance of caution. There's no harm in asking for your authorization to sign next contract, what this does is allow us to accept money. Right?
I'll make a motion to, uh, authorize the first likely to sign the personal service agreement grant contract between the town of East Windsor. Um, and the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for park improvements. Um, the contract identification number is two oh two three dash zero two two.
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
opposed?
Thank you for listening to my job.
We'll actually have a couple more, um, one's got a pair of, coming too. You want this now, or do you want me to just catch up with you tomorrow? Oh, I said, okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
You gotta do a copy.
Yeah, there's a.
Thing you have to do for, right, right to them.
I'll upload a picture of my signature, it's really kind of twenty-first century. Uh, okay, so, um, the tie bond agreement is, uh, kind of a third party, a three-party, uh, deal that involves. Um. Tie bond the company that's putting together remediation plan for a, a. Property of interests, I'll say, um, it's, this is public, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this pertains to the, the, uh, mess that's on, uh. Who, is it two fifty something, what's the, two forty-eight?
Forty-seven, forty-eight.
So it's, it's the ball property that's, uh, has. Thousands of yards of illegal fill, um, and the, um. Tie and bond are the folks who are putting together remediation plan, we now have, uh, Pullman and Conley holding. The payment from Mr. Balch in escrow for tie and bond, so we actually will not be on the hook for anything financial here. Um, I was not gonna sign this under the, the promise of, of. Any, anyone saying, oh, you pay the bill and we'll pay you back. Um, so that's now in, in place, um, so, and I actually. Don't have the document, there is a form that I need, uh, to sign. The contract, I need to sign the contract with tie and bond, and I need your authorization to do it, but. We'll take a break, um, when, when we do executive session, I'll get a copy of it so you can see it, and then we'll, we'll vote on it again, that is the nuts and bolts. Basically, it's just saying, the third party is gonna be holding the checks, we, we won't have anything, uh, any skin in the game, and the remedial work will move forward. So we'll come, we'll come back tonight, uh, after, after our timeout. Um, so the annual town meeting has to be held in the month of December, we need to do a couple of things at that meeting, most, most pointedly, we need to accept the annual town report. Um, which we should have back by about, uh, December fifteenth. Um, the problem is, the annual town report needs to be available for five days prior to the annual town meeting, um, for us to have it, so that means. We're looking at the, either the week before Christmas or the week between Christmas and New Year's. Um, I have a couple of other things I'm gonna wanna move, so I would like to do it between, uh, the week of Christmas and New Year's, if that works for you all. Um. I'm hoping we'll be able to take care of the south route circumstance at that point, um, we might have another ordinance to do by then. Um. So, if I could just have as much of the month as possible, that, that'd be, I'm looking to, uh, um. Maybe on the twenty-eighth, instead of just gonna say.
Is that Monday?
It's a Wednesday.
I can do Wednesday. I can't do it Monday.
Wednesday the twenty-eighth, boys? Okay, um, it's, so that, a town meeting has to start at seven thirty, that's in the charter. Typically, we've done some sort of a theme or an additional program around this, um, do you guys feel a need to do that, is there anything that you'd like to do? We've done FOIA, we've done like a, a meet and breed of sorts, um. All those are the only two that I've done, because one year was a cricket, um, so there was, all we did was on. If you guys are interested in doing something, I'm happy to try and put something together, um. I'll leave it at that.
Let's use it as a form to do a spotlight on our businesses and.
Hey, what would that look like? Hey, what would that look like? Just invite the.
Can invite, I wouldn't invite. The whole town. But. Maybe a couple of long-term. New businesses in town just to come and speak to the board as a start.
Or we did invite passport participants.
Yeah, that's even better.
And that's twenty. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. That gives me something to work with.
Yeah. Good idea. Um, and I did not throw my passport to share.
There are, there are people who are returning forty-six, forty-seven stamps.
I don't know.
Um, okay. So speaking of the annual town meeting, one of the things that we did last year that I'd like to continue doing is just do a blanket establishment of the referendum hours for the next year. To be from six AM to eight PM. By statute, they uh referendum needs to run from twelve PM to eight PM. Um, but municipalities have the opportunity to extend those hours further. Access to voting is. You know, I think central to the survival of democracy, so. That that we just do it for the full day like a normal election seems to make some sense. Um, so in order to do that, I need a motion from the board to uh set our referendum hours pursuant to CPS seven dash ninety-six uh for the calendar year. Twenty twenty-three at six AM to eight PM and forward that to town meeting.
Move that we set the referendum hours for the calendar year twenty twenty-three pursuant to Connecticut General Statute. Seven dash nine-six from six AM to eight PM and forward that to a town meeting.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? opposed? So carry. Taxing funds.
Move that we approve the tax three funds totaling two thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So here. Um, so as we heard tonight, by state law, towns and cities in Connecticut are required to do property evaluations once every five years. This is our turn in the revaluation cycle. Notices of changes in property values should be going out this week and received today or tomorrow. And likely will will reflect increased values as determined by the housing market over the last few years. When notices are received, please do not apply the current mill rate to the new value. The yield rate will very likely be lower next year than it is now. If you apply your new value to the current mill rate, you'll see a tax obligation that is incorrect and artificially high. The revaluation process needs to involve property owners from start to finish. So after receiving your notice, you'll have an opportunity, if necessary, to discuss the value with the company that performed the revaluation and appeal anything that may be incorrect. Property owners will also have the opportunity to appeal their valuation to the Board of Assessment Appeals in early March. Property owners are encouraged to participate in the budget process throughout the winter and the spring. If you have any questions about the Rebound process, please feel free to contact the town assessor. Given the significant increases in property value driven by market demand over the last few years, the board of selectmen will continue to look at options available to the town to mitigate the effect on residents. To that end, your office of policy and management under Secretary Martin Heff will be at the Board of Selecting meeting on December fifteenth. To do a deeper dive into the options available to us. I met with Undersecretary Heff today and have had preliminary discussions about those options. And I think that the board of uh the board of the community will benefit from hearing more from him on the fifteenth. I want to thank Senator Anwar, Representative Foster, and Representative Hall for forwarding that meeting with OPM so quickly. Um, a very big thank you to the plenty businesses that participated in the inaugural year of our Small Business Passport Program, which ran through this past Saturday. For people who participated, please make sure to return your completed passports to my office by the end of the day on Monday. The Board of Selecting will have a special meeting on December thirteenth to draw the winners. That's happening because when I set the date, I thought I I was looking at the wrong month. And thought the thirteenth was our regular meeting day. So we'll have a special meeting on Tuesday. Um, just to do that. Sorry, guys. What's that? Yeah, I'm curious. We we know, we noticed that Friday's gonna be on the thirteenth. We gotta do it. Yeah, we'll do it. We'll do it quick. Oh, planning and zoning is meeting at uh Scout Hall that night.
That's right.
Yeah, great. Um. I'll do it. It's I'll do it at six. It'll take all of twenty minutes. We could do that. I can't do it on Zoom that way though. Can I do it on Zoom there?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we'll do that.
Yeah.
There we go.
There you go.
Good idea. On November nineteenth, the town formally renamed Master Sergeant Richard U. Sherman Park at the intersections of Woolham Road and Cemetery Road in honor of Dick Sherman. Who has served the town in many capacities over the decades, including for more than twenty years on the American Heritage River Commission. Later that same day, I was pleased to welcome one of our newest businesses to East Windsor. Yeshua Spa and Wellness Center opened in Pasco's Common and is a great family-owned and operated spot for spa services. A really nice family that's running that. On November twenty-third, the police commission held a special meeting to celebrate former Chief Ed DiMarco's retirement after nearly twenty years of service to the East Windsor Police Department. It was nice to see current and former chiefs from surrounding towns joining the celebration to wish Ed well in his next chapter. We wish him and his wife Michelle nothing but the best in the future. On November twenty-sixth, the police union held their annual stuff cruiser event in East Windsor Walmart. More than a dozen of our local police officers participated in the day-long event that uh benefits. Family sponsored by uh sponsored through East Windsor Community Services for the holiday season. We appreciate the partnership and the generosity of our officers and the members of the community who donate. Congratulations to the East Windsor PD again. Uh, attaining tier-two accreditation and to Sergeants Leavon and Gonzalez on being invited to join the statewide accreditation review committee because of their good work they're working. Uh, our community services department is in need of hams and twenty-five dollar gift cards to support two hundred and fifty-three families that the town is sponsoring for Christmas this year. This marks a steep increase over Thanksgiving and certainly over last year as well. If you want to help, please reach out to community services. We're now accepting letters from Santa. Santa's ready to receive letters from kids in our community in the third and fourth grade. Letters can be dropped off in the mailbox outside of the Robert Fire Department and must be received by December ninth. Be sure to have your child tell Santa a little bit about themselves. What they've done this year to make the nice list and of course, what they want for Christmas. This year's torchlight parade, an annual collaboration between the Robert Fire Department and the Town's Community Services Department. Will be on December seventeenth by thirty PM. Parade will begin at East Windsor Middle School and proceed along Main Street to the firehouse. Refreshments and carousing will be available after that and all our work. That's all I have. Great.
Okay, um, the third last meeting, the two liaison meetings that I had, one was on the police commission, which uh Jay already addressed. Um. Was to congratulate um Chief DiMarco on his retirement. Um, there was a certain, um, there was several people there. Um. My other meeting I had this month um was last night. Um, I'll put it in writing, be open afterwards. Um, but it was all a short meeting, but a valuable meeting um this time. Um. There was some correspondence that's always brought out um. To give the board ideas of what's happening in other towns and things that have taken place. Um. And I have to admit, I think East Windsor's doing a great job. Um. They talked about the IT status and some of the system changes on the software and the two pump stations that were added. Um, to that computer um capability. Um. They talked about uh two-man hole covers that they had to locate outside. Um. Correct the doughs. They had uh pump stations on Mill Street and Scannick Road that were upgraded. Um, they have another one that's gonna happen. Um. They talked about returning the pump back that they shared with the uh town garage people. Um. Which they in terms winterized it, only to have to take it out of storage and use it to uh the couple issues that arose. Um, that the people that were involved were very thankful for what they did. Um, they talked about a meet and greet taking place at the Barbara Elementary School as an educational uh program. Um, and it was brought up that uh possibly doing it also at the middle school for public relations. Uh, because there's a lot of logging that's happening out of the schools with stuff being thrown down the toilet and whatnot, so. Um, hopefully that program will get off off the ground and it'll be valuable to those students moving forward. In school and out of school at the same time. Um, they talked about the status of the Stow Bridge. Um, and the concern that they have about the rate payers having to pay to have the pipe moved at a hundred. More uh one point eight million dollars. Um. And uh. They're still um going to be pursuing what they can do there. Um, they also talked about CIP. Um, and whether or not they should be doing something to, because of the economy and the cost of price of things going up, what they should do, so. Um. They tabled some of it because some things are still in the air, but they did authorize. Um. Them to spend the money to get two new raw sewage pumps on. Which will probably take several months to come in, um, but they know they're gonna need them. And if they get them now, and the deadline date was immediately, also we're gonna lose the price and possibly use. The ability to get what they need for something that was coming down the road. So, um, that expenditure, because they were concerned. Go over their budget, but they have the money um to do it and it's gonna save money in the long term, so. I commend that group for their fiscal responsibility. Um, as small as that group is and as far away as they are, the people seem to forget. Um, in in my opinion, they're doing a wonderful job of making sure that they're fiscal responsible for the residents in East Windsor, so. Kudos to your group over there. I don't think I missed anything, did I? If I did, feel free to comment.
It's it's important to identify that CIP through the WPCA is not CIP for the town.
Right.
Clearly, we got. Okay, so I did miss my Board of Education meeting last week, so I had. Way too much work. Um, but I did wanna dig you back on your comment about social services collecting. Um, ham and gift cards. There will be a special collection happening at Geiser Supermarket. Uh, Sunday, December eleventh, between ten and two PM. Uh, we'll be collecting um. All those items and bringing them to social services um on that thing, so. That will be happening. And the only other thing I wanted to add is, is there a special box to turn these in? Do they go to your office?
It's really fun to look for it. I wanna lose it. My wife would kill me. It's hers, so. That's all I have.
Alan is very.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so uh. Diversity didn't meet. Nobody showed up there. Yeah, I didn't get the memo. So, um, so planning and zoning, they did approve the uh the worker housing on Wapping Road. It's about uh the house about forty, forty-five. Uh, workers. Um, it's pretty interesting uh presentation that was done by uh. Counsel, do you remember the name of the the title of that woman? She basically an ambassador for Jamaica uh and and described that program. Uh, which East Windsor has been a part of for more than eighty years, bringing people from Jamaica to work here and. And how much those workers actually really, really appreciate it and. Uh, you know, really have um contributed to the community, so just happy to see that go through uh and they'll get going on that pretty soon, I guess. Uh, the other item is they accepted the the new application for the Scannick, the Event Center, so that'll be heard. At the December thirteenth meeting, which is why it's over at Scout Hall. Um, so they can accommodate the public interest that will be. Uh. Involved there, so and and as I'm sure you saw on Facebook, everybody is letting everybody know that that's happening, so. You can expect that to be an interesting conversation. Um, that's about it for that meeting. It was a pretty short meeting compared and. Uh comparatively, um, so the only other thing I have to talk about is we're starting up police uh union negotiations on the fifth, Monday. Believe that'll go away.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, on November nineteenth, I did a ride along with Corporal Byron Smith of the East Windsor Police Department on the three PM to eleven PM shift. Corporal Smith has been with the East Windsor Police Department for eighteen years, serving all of his years in law enforcement here in East Windsor. In addition, he is the current president of the East Windsor Police Union and one of two firearm instructors at the police department. Which is responsible for the department's armory. This includes making sure that all officers are up to date on training and handling of their firearms. And conducting the necessary maintenance on the firearms. He is knowledgeable, professional, and extremely passionate about his work here in town. We discussed some of the issues affecting our community, such as catalytic converter thefts, the continuation of the opioid crisis and domestic violence. Corporal Smith educated me on the various types of warrants and how they are handled, how radar stops are conducted. And some of the new protocol used by the department due to the Police Accountability Bill. Corporal Smith is patient, kind, and a valuable part of our community and our police department. And I want to thank him for all that he does to serve and protect our community. This was my fourth ride along and I continue to be impressed by the integrity and dedication of the men and women in blue that serve our community every day. Um, and if anyone is interested, anyone can go on a ride along. You just um call the police department. And they'd be happy to take you along and show you um the day-to-day life of an officer. And everything else was already mentioned. That's all that I have.
All right.
Public participation is public second opportunity to address members of the board. You have any comments or or questions? We're happy to take them. Please identify yourself by name and address. And then after we take care of the folks in the room, I'll turn anybody online. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sherry. Um, thank you. New business, eight B. Wow.
Yeah, it's eye-popping.
It's uh, it's clear that. Inflation's killing us and we really don't have a lot of, lot of recourse on that. But then again, there's another thing to factor in here. You brought something up and rebounded on that one too. What about the old people? I mean, we're being. I I'm not old, but by the way. But we have no compensation for staying here. Why would I want to stay here in this town? I've been here all my life so far. I'd like to die in this town. Hate to say it, but. You know, but. Florida looks a lot better. They don't have these taxes like this. You know, they're, we're seniors. You guys who are still working, anybody still working, has a good chance of getting a raise. You're getting every week. Or these two weeks or a month, a paycheck. We don't, our paycheck may be whatever we saved. Plus a uh. Whatever the.
Handout from the government.
Thank you. Whatever the government gives us. Yeah, well, there's no increase. You increase my tax. My spending goes down. I have to liquidate my assets to keep my head above the bar.
Yeah, we're gonna do everything we can to mitigate that. Um, and there are, as I alluded to, we do have some choices to make. Um. All of them have pros and cons. Um, so we'll we'll start fleshing those out over the next couple of meetings. Um, we will. Depending on the choice we make, we will have to act definitively early in the.
They do have something for seniors. I mean, you you know, it's based upon. What you're receiving a year for your income, but it doesn't base anything on what you're spending. So, you know, it's kind of. Corrected itself.
Well, one of the the things I alluded to is an ordinance we may be revisiting at the uh annual town meeting. Um, there is. An ordinance on the books I wanna um. Modify so that it may be more beneficial to seniors than it is now. Um. So that's something that will be on our agenda in two weeks.
Something, something as simple as going through the following thing, you know. They want five bars to go through there. Why can't the seniors just been there for nothing? I mean, my contribution to this done in seventy-two years. Do I want to get seventy-three?
We're gonna do the very best we can. Anything else, sir? Anybody else?
I'm looking up a grid now. I just read social security is going up January first, eleven percent.
Really?
That much?
Yeah.
It's inflation.
Yeah.
Inflation pushing up the.
Projected at eight.
Yes, that's.
Eight point seven was just given to us last month and the month before. It's going up again.
There really is.
Anybody I want, I didn't care to address the board of selectmen. Okay, we're gonna have a brief executive session, um, and then we will come back out and take action, uh, an actual vote on agenda item nine now. Um, my apologies for omitting that. I was. Um, can I have a motion to go into executive session at nine sixteen? To move, there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session at nine sixteen. We're in executive session at nine sixteen. Um, I don't think we'll be very long.
Jason, if you're, if you're talking, it's not coming over. If you've come out of exec, executive session or have you not? You are, I'm getting nothing from you. It's Alan's fault for closing up his computer.
Um, you know what?
Got it, got it, got it. It was muted. I don't know.
Okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
My fault because I moved it. I must move it.
Oh. Okay, Marie, we'll blame it on you.
Okay, on the last item of business, come before the winner's segment, agenda item nine, uh, approval of the agreement with tie and bond. Um, and to authorize my signature, can I have a motion?
I'll move to authorize the first selectman to sign the agreement between tie and bond and the town of East Windsor.
Your second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, so Carrie, next item is adjournments. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn at nine fifty-eight.
Made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Return at nine fifteen PM.